So, good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order our study session this evening where we are going to review comments on the draft of the development code. Those are both from engineering, some of which from Jason Widdinger that were presented to us in last month's meeting. And then at the completion of that, then we will review kind of the agenda items if you all have any questions around the agenda for this evening. That being said, we are called to order. All right. Ms. Paradise?
Yes, ma'am.
How you want to start attacking the...
Well, which, um, I would say which do y'all want to start with? The engineering comments or Jason's comments?
Uh, let's do engineering first because that's probably going to be a little quicker and to the point, I think.
That's all, I believe, in chapter thirteen?
So there, uh, the comments that are on the first page, which were closer than twenty-five feet from wetlands, Article three point, thirteen point three point one. There are some that are, um, where wetlands, kind of minor edits. And then in the actual copy of the development code, if you look at thirteen, one, there's a suggestion on some text in red that is moved from another section to the very beginning and some additions, larger additions, larger text additions that are spelled out directly in red. It's basically the same set of changes. And I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at them beforehand, if there's anything in addition to or any concerns or questions about engineering's suggestions? If there's a silence in favor of the recommended changes of engineering? All right, thank you for verbal. Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Paradise, we don't have any issues with any of the, recommend all of the suggested changes by engineering be accepted? All right. Let's go to the comments by Mr. Widdinger. That's in a separate, he put a separate stat?
We, um, while I was out last week, they consolidated those on one page and included in the packet for you. But for me, looking at it, it was easier by looking through, um, his markups. So I copied those so whichever way was easier for you, y'all could do.
All right, so, um, sorry, Ms. Paradise, I don't know if you want to share staff's thoughts on any of them. I guess go through them fourteen, twelve, one. Best ways to discuss them.
We want to start out at the front with, um...
Four twelve point one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, there was no changes in, from the existing development code to this code. While what he says is true, if you take the width, it's not enough, so you added, you may have to add additional width there. If you want to revise it, I would suggest making the lot width wider rather than deeper. If you wanted to get that square footage to be four thousand square feet based on, say, a hundred and fifty by whatever.
So I guess a question is whether or not for the classification of R fourteen, is it your opinion that this is an appropriate lot size? And I don't know that we've had any other folks come forward to complain about that?
We have not.
All right, so are there any feedback wishes from the commissioners around with regards to R fourteen and lot size? Or if everybody's fine with the way it's been and will be? Um, and then fourteen, twelve, two was the same. And fourteen, twelve, three was around the lot width for townhomes and single-family attached? Is that...
Um, are we on point two or point three?
So point two is basically
The same thing.
Same thing, but with R ten, right? And then...
So that's a no as well?
I'm assuming, does anybody have any? And then R seven is four twelve, three, and his recommendation was to consider allowing a twenty-foot lot width for townhomes and single-family attached.
Right.
Even though...
What's that? Townhomes and single-family attached may have a twenty-four-foot lot width. That's in the footnote two. But I would also, um, in the current code, there's a footnote that basically says, um, townhomes and single-family attached in an R seven does not have to meet the minimum lot size, does not have to meet setbacks. You know, a lot of the design criteria is not required, and I think that's been overlooked here in the R seven. We did the lot width, which is something that we haven't asked for variances now. But I think we need to add those others back in, or we're going to be asking for variances for those.
Okay, so what's the recommended?
Adds some verbiage into the footnotes there that minimum lot size requirements do not apply to subdivisions, to patio homes, duplexes, row houses. Right now, what it says, minimum lot size requirements do not apply to conservation subdivisions or traditional neighborhood developments, or to patio homes, duplexes, row houses, townhouses, apartments, or any other multifamily dwellings. Minimum lot size are expressed in square feet unless otherwise indicated. Additional rules of interpretation for minimum lot area are set forth in three point five point four. So, um, I think we need to add that in there, that minimum lot size. If I could just kind of cut and paste that and make it appropriate to the new ordinance, I think that would meet what we need.
Okay.
Does that make sense, or am I confusing you?
No, it does. I think it, um... Okay, so is everybody clear about what time is proposed and agreement? So then that would be the recommended way of addressing his comments on fourteen, twelve, point three?
On the, um, lot size and the minimum lot size, the comments here, do y'all want to do anything about those from, comments from Jason? Or are they typical as the others? Twenty-four feet?
No, he's recommending a twenty-foot lot width for townhomes and single-family attached.
Right, and y'all had recommended twenty-four.
Okay. So let's keep with that, I think that's twenty-four. All right, is that five point four point two point one CI next?
Yes, ma'am. He, and, um, again, I would like to add those exceptions from R seven for the lot width. For the lot width, wouldn't be a problem on this one. As far as the lot size, that's in the existing code that is in R seven, um, cut and paste that and put it in this one.
Okay, but that's in four twelve, three, so that's what we agreed, I think, on the R seven, right?
Right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then there's, okay, so then there's nothing else, I don't think, on...
R seven.
Yeah. So then the next item was the five point four point two CI, which is the, uh, allowing food trucks in residential neighborhoods? I guess I'm going, which page are you? I guess because we're going from two different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we're going from the notes and, um...
I was following along his notes in there.
Okay, because you know, some of his notes in here, we, we addressed and questions kind of dealt with during the meeting. I'm sorry, so I was following the sheet and then referring back to his notes.
And I can get on the same sheet as y'all.
Okay.
Which sheet? Are we on?
Yeah, it's where it's on the back of engineering's comments.
Gotcha.
So what I was doing is going down that list and then using the text that was totally copied in the packet.
So are we at Article four, general comment?
Um, considering a planned or residential development. The one above that is the one that you just talked about, right? Yeah, that's four twelve, three. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So that we are staying kind of in order.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
On, on the R five, because there is some comments on the R five that I don't see in here.
Oh, okay.
Four twelve, four. And, um, would you want to put in those same exemptions for row houses?
Yes.
Single-family attached and stuff that we put in R seven?
Yes. That's why we were confused. Okay.
Article four. And this is something that we didn't discuss in the development code. Um, I don't know if it's something that y'all want to do or not. There'd be two ways, well, three, three ways. Is one is not address it. One, we could, uh, or the commission could, um, work through it and develop zoning district standards. Or you could put it, as, as they say, when we had those facilitators, put it in the parking lot and on our to-do list, and get the development code through and then come back and tackle this as a separate issue if that's something the planning commission wanted to do. That's three different ways to address it.
So right now, you're just looking at adding that comment, the general comment, if we were to do that tonight?
Excuse me?
Right now, you're just looking at adding that general comment, number four?
Well, we wouldn't, actually, you wouldn't be adding anything. You would just put, be putting it on your to-do list, so to speak.
So it's, it's whether or not we want to tackle the use of a planned residential development classification in this revised code, or if it's something that we want to discuss later on and potentially explore?
Basically, you would be, um, developing a new zoning district.
Yeah.
Planned residential or some other verbiage that we'd need to go back and, and do the research and add that in.
Okay, so are there any initial, I mean, I, I think it is potentially something worth considering, or just learning how other communities have used the PRD versus a PD classification? So I think it's something that we should maybe have a conversation on, and it may be in the same way that we had the session with the consultant for continuing ed, that it may be something for that type of conversation? Does that, does that make sense?
Definitely worth exploring more.
No, we don't need to hold up with that, that's a whole nother.
Yeah, okay. So the way I'm looking at it is, is we're going to address that later?
Yes. And just maybe put that on a wish list for continuing ed if we do it. Okay, so then, um, next, which is where I had skipped altogether, which was the food trucks in residential neighborhoods.
You know, that is a, um, I don't think, two issues there while you may get food trucks coming into your residential area. They also, there is a difference whenever you tell them that is allowed. And I believe, and I hadn't researched it, but I believe you can, you're prohibited by state law from selling from the public street. And I remember the old time ice cream man and that stuff. But I also think that there's, because a food truck in a neighborhood is probably going to be in the street as opposed to a food truck under our current ordinance is not allowed to serve from the street, it's got to be private property.
I don't think, I, I think that's one of those things that if we were going to put that in the, the code would require us opening it up for a whole nother set of public comments, because I think that's something that folks would have very strong opinions on.
It could go both ways.
Yeah.
Slippery slope for you to have them start parking in a residential neighborhood, selling versus being invited by...
So as it, as it is now, or as it's, we're looking at doing, or is there any way to have a food truck? In, like, could I pull into my driveway if I was having some people at the house?
In a residential district, no.
But, but that's selling, so that was if you had a food truck as a caterer for your, any event, that's a different, that, that's a different use.
If, 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 if you live there and that's your vehicle and parked there, we're not talking about that.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm saying if we had, no, I don't have a food truck.
If you, if you owned a food truck and you pulled it up, say, in an R fourteen and opened it up for business, you're not allowed to do that.
Right. But if I'm having an event at my house?
So it's like a caterer, so it...
If it's a caterer, correct. That would be different. But if you're opening it up to the general public, that's a business.
So would that, would that be, let's say, a neighborhood was going to have a neighborhood party and maybe perhaps some inflatables in somebody's yard, and then you would, so it's sort of an invite, but it's sort of to the public, because I know in some communities and even here, I know the mayor's been to some where there are neighborhood events. I don't have anything like that necessarily planned, but I could see where it could be a good idea to make that a feasible possibility.
And I don't know anything in our ordinance right now that would prohibit it. I, I, I think the HOA, um, they, they have some common area. They set up the inflatables, they set up a food truck, or they set up the, um, grills and the dad's cook or however. You know, that's the kind of stuff you want neighborhoods doing.
Right.
And we're not, this isn't what it's, the, the food truck ordinance isn't to stop that kind of thing.
So maybe we should, maybe, and this is a point of clarification for this, then it really is about food truck locations that are operating as commercial businesses at that time. So it's not the food truck as a catered event. It is if the food truck just wants to come and do Taco Tuesdays in my neighborhood because they know that they'll make a bunch of money, right? Then this is saying that they can't do that. And so, um, it may just be that we may need some, uh, so it's not the food truck in and of itself, it is the food truck operating as a business, right, and not a catered as a, as a private, as a public business, not a private event. Is that a, is that a way? So I don't know, you can just ask the consultants if there's, if they've, because I'm sure in some areas, probably like Buford or Hillhead, they probably should have refined that language a little more.
Excuse me?
So if you could ask them if in other communities, they have used maybe different language around, just it's basically a food truck operating as a freestanding public business.
I think the context of the comment, at least the way I read it, was that it's happening now, and if it's not legal, then if we're going to police it, what good is the, is the condition?
I think the comment was it was happening in his neighborhood, and he doesn't reside in the city.
Yeah.
So I didn't see that as a violation in our current ordinance. If it is a vi, being conducted in the city, that is something we would work through our code enforcement. If the neigh, if the neighborhood invited it, one is you can't sell from the public road. So it would have to be on private property. And they would have to get a certificate of compliance for that particular parcel. And then we would check the zoning. And there's also distances from your brick and mortar, um, restaurants as well. Um, we would, if it is an event for the neighborhood and it's like Dr. Crawford said, it's a flat fee cater type thing, that would work. If it is, um, a food truck party, you say you have six food trucks on a vacant lot, and they're having a festival out there, no, that's a commercial application. It wouldn't be allowed in a residential district. Just need to be careful about the commercial encroaching on the residential.
Just need to tell all the masters caters to go home, you know?
Masters week is a whole nother thing.
I would say my commentary on that one. We're not on the mic. Uh, all right, so any other comments on, so I think the general consensus is probably leave well enough alone, but just may need to potentially clean up the language on what you mean by food truck. Because it's not the truck in and of itself, but the business and a commercial business operating. Next is five point five twenty point three. Excuse me. Consider, uh, allowing parking in front of buildings?
This is for, uh, multi-family dwellings. Parking lots shall locate, shall be located behind buildings except where the city determines it is appropriate to use a parking lot as a buffer from arterial street or where such parking area will directly above a property line exterior to the development when located or adjacent to a residential district. So, you know, this is, um, basically, if you have townhomes, you should be parking in the rear.
Yeah. No, I, I disagree with that one. I don't know if there's anybody who agrees with him on, but I don't think for multifamily, you need to open up, have a... All right, so we disagree.
Delete that?
Which, wait a minute, delete, we, we were saying that his, his consideration was to allow parking in the fronts of buildings.
Right.
We were saying, we're not interested in that, so we're fine with...
Leaving it stand as it is.
Leaving it standing as it is. Yeah, so not to... The next one is it, his point was the drives and parking lots are typically the same, separating these two increases and purring this cover, so...
And what that section says is buildings shall be sided with front entrances and porches oriented towards streets, drives, and plazas rather than clustered around parking lots. Any design that deviates from this standard would require a major waiver and must be approved as a special exception. If I could add a comment there?
Please.
Um, and I'm not for sure what you want to do, but I would say it is either a special exception or a major waiver. The way this reads, it sounds like it's both. And you're causing two jumps through the ring for one issue. And I would think that it would be a major waiver because special exceptions has two would uses.
Yeah, so they're just, I'm, I'm fine with that, just putting a period after waiver and deleting it. Does anybody else feel strongly about doing that otherwise? I think his point was the drives and parking lot are typically the same. All right, anything else on that comment?
Do you want to le, leave it or make any changes or?
This is a correction that we made with the...
Just, the only correction is make it a major waiver and not a special exception.
Because I think he was saying that parking drives and parking... Because I think he was saying that parking drives and parking lot are typically the same, separating these, but it's not talking about separating them as much as it is talking about where the building should be oriented, so I don't know that that's completely applicable unless I'm misunderstanding his comment, is that? Anybody else have a different understanding of this? Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think that's a bad thing.
No, I think the way that it is, I agree that the way it is is fine. And then five, five thirty-eight. B, the comment was, um, each ground floor must be accessed through a single shared main entrance from a primary facade.
And what that says is for triplexes and quadruplexes, each ground floor unit must be accessed through a single shared main entrance from a primary facade. Second story units may be accessed through the shared main entrance or by an exterior stairway. So, where I read that, now you typically have a quadruplexes, one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
You would, this would make you go into a one door and then the four units would go off of that.
Right, no understanding there.
Go ahead. You come on up. And introduce yourself and just sort of throwback please.
Jason Winkler, one seven five seven eight, Atomic Road, Aiken, South Carolina. Um, I think in general, most of my comments have been taken out of context.
Oh, okay.
Um, I mean, at this point, probably don't have time to go back through them all, but I mean, I, I, is what it is, but, but my, uh, comment on this one in particular was if, if you require a single shared entry for, for these uses, I mean, that's a total architectural change from, you know, and that's probably based on the, whatever consultant you use, writing up plans for Charleston, Hilton Head, and places that don't really apply to this area. And, um, you know, if you have four units in a row, like Mr. Paradise said, how do you get one shared entry for four units in a row? I mean, it's very difficult without totally changing, um, how things are built. And so it just, you know, it leads to a bigger issue of, you know, how, how the whole building is designed. Um, and, and, and I think now you're, or the, the ordinance, or the, as written, would be leaning towards architectural review and design, you know, from, from the city standpoint. Um, I mean, I, I, from my standpoint, that's an issue I'd, I'd like for government to let the private sector decide on.
Mr. Paradise, what's the current ordinance on that? I don't, for triplexes and quadruplexes. You have it?
I don't have it right at hand, I, it's gonna take a minute.
Okay. Was there anything else that we got completely wrong with you? Was just passionate about, if I could, one more in particular?
Okay.
Let me, let me think on how to, because I, if, because you know, I guess part of the problem is we walked through it the last time and then, you know, obviously by the time we look at their notes, yours, and then our own, it's, uh, trying to walk through this is, is a bit of a, a onerous process, so let me, um, maybe we can think about how to do that, um.
What? And one thing, I'll, I, I mean, I just wanna explain in further detail, and, you know, it'd be tough to try to go back through that and y'all've got a seven o'clock meeting and, you know, just kinda walk through these things and, you know, unfortunately, I'm the only guy from the development community that decided to show up last month and this month, which, I mean, that's, you know, my, from the competitors' issues, not mine, but, um, I, I think it's, I mean, from, from my standpoint, we do this a lot in, in a lot of places we work, we just try to, you know, it's, it's hard to put our thoughts into context in thirty seconds, you know, and go through this whole thing. And I'd love to explain things to you and walk you through the process and how we look at projects and, you know, some of these issues we come up against. So, I mean, that, that's, in general, that, that would be why I'd love to, you know, at least, and, and I'll go by your lead, um.
And what, what, so we'll think about it because, and I think part of what we did was in the way that, and Mr. Paradise can correct me, was, um, early on in the committee and in the public discussions, trying to get some of the developer comments on the front end as well. And I think that part of why we kinda moved through some of this was quickly, was we appreciated you taking the time to do it, but didn't receive them kind of on the front end.
Well, my understanding was it wasn't open to public comment until it was put to a public hearing, and so that's why we held back.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, when, my understanding, the development code, when we began the rewrite, and it was before I was here, when Libby was still here, um, they did an assessment and got comments from the public as to what was wrong wi- with the development code. And the focus has been on meeting those issues that was brought up on the front end. Now, when Mr. Winkler says, yeah, um, I did wait and give him a draft to comment on until public hearing, and we had pushed it out to the public. So, you know, there was a time in the beginning, before Tommy, that you could have made the comments before we started, and now we, we've got this and it's time for more comments.
So, a- and so, so I was just, so then when you were saying that, um, we had not, so when we were referring to not having heard the same comments, it was including that time period where we did the focus groups in the beginning? And some of that was during COVID, so I, I, I understand that that was-
And, and my, I'm, I certainly didn't want to come across as throwing Mr. Paradise under the bus.
No, no, you weren't.
Because he's great to work with, so.
No, 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 you weren't at all. I, I just wanted to clarify that when we were saying that you gave us your comments on lot size and, and we had not heard it from other developers, it was during that time period where we had focus groups that were targeted to obtain that information. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Well, I have a quick question or thought.
Yeah.
If while he's here, I mean, since he's here and these are his notes, could he just stay up at the mic and kind of, it might be quicker having a better explanation to get through this list?
Well, well, that's kinda what we, so we need to figure out, because that's what we did last month, but then by the time we discuss it, which is what we tried to do there, so I, we'll, we'll have to think about how to, to work on this, because I don't know, um, yeah, that, that's gonna be just redoing what we did, because by the time he goes through two more, then we'll have to do the same thing again, we're gonna be in the same shoe, same position next month, so I don't know that that's advantageous either. If any of you all have any suggestions or thoughts, Mr. Paradise?
I'll just have the answer to your question when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, I just, you know, um, the current requirement states the main entrance of each structure must face the street, interior street, or drive or courtyard. On corner lots, the main entrance may face either the streets. Buildings that have more than one main entrance, only one entrance must meet this requirement. A building must include a front porch, stoop, or recessed entryway at all main entrances that face a street. The porch stoop or recessed entryway shall join the main entrance, and the main entrance shall be accessible from the porch, stoop, or recessed entryway. So that is a pretty big change from what's existing in our code, um, what is proposed.
I, I kinda agree with him that having a, you know, triplex or quad- quadruplex, excuse me, um, like to have four different units in, coming in one door only, I mean, it's gonna have to be two stories and have, you know, you go in, there's a stairwell, there's some apartments right next to me that are basically four units and are set up like that, whereas most of the duplexes and, and bigger that I've seen around aren't, aren't like that. I'm okay with taking that out.
I think the big question comes in is not necessarily apartments, but how would you do it with townhomes when you own the ground underneath?
Alright, is, alright, trying to figure out how to, uh, what may be the best between the two, right? I'm not sure.
I think what have, having them designate what direction to face the entryway is much simpler and makes more sense from an aesthetic perspective than trying to force them to put one entry on four units, where you're gonna be dealing with the traffic of the people in and out of the home as well. It's, seems a little congested and unnecessary, I'm not really sure what purpose that serves to have them all coming through one entrance.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I get it, and I think it is what Mr. Winkler said, whi- which is the, um, there are a couple of buildings down in, in Hamlet area where it's a multi, so it's kinda almost not quite an apartment, but it has that feel, so you go into the main entrance, there's a lobby, and then go up to, to, so I think it is in keeping with that. So if, um, consensus is leaving it the way it is, it's fine in the current ordinance, everybody else okay with that, or you? I'm sorry, Commissioner Carney?
So we're taking out the new information?
Yeah, so maybe leaving the current ordinance, cor- cor- current ordinance as is. Alright. Alright, so, okay, Mr. Paradise, we got that, we've got about, um, nineteen minutes left. Let's, um, let me see, let me pause for one second. Are there many questions with regards to the agenda? Or, Mr. Paradise, anything that you want to go over with the reg- agenda for this evening? Or do you wanna just keep going on this and then we'll?
I'm, I'm good.
Were there any questions? From anybody else with regards to the agenda? Okay. Alright, so then what we'll do is we'll keep going and then maybe it looks like what we'll need to do is, do we need to schedule an additional study session before the next meeting, and maybe that's a way to dig into this and then?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Whatever y'all wanna do.
And then that might be the right compromise to, to go from there. Okay. So, um, we'll get through what we can, maybe the next eight minutes or so, and, um, we'll schedule another follow-up study group, study vis- losing my words, um, study session, thank you, saying study group like I'm in school, so study session. Um, and then let's try and do that maybe before, if possible, before the next meeting?
Eighty, yes ma'am.
Okay. And then we'll give everybody a break before we, at least a five, ten minute break before we start.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, alright, so next up is six, three, four, six.
This is, this is the one where they talk about the retaining walls and the decorative, and I have a note here from the last meeting, it said, "Four concrete were not visible from street," um, indicating that that may have been the direction the commission was leaning on doing this.
Mm-hmm.
But I wanna make sure before I do that.
Yeah, we're fine with, I'm fine with that, we're all fine with that.
Um, six point, three point, five point two, which is galvanized fencing. Uh, fences, right now you would have, have, if you had chain link, it would have to be black, vinyl clad chain link. And the question was, I think, would, do you wanna allow galvanized chain link, or maybe galvanized chain link in residential areas? So.
I, I'm fine with it as, I, I'm fine with the-
As is?
As is on this one. I don't know, is there anybody else? Okay, so we're, I think everybody else is, we're all fine with it as is.
Six point four, for these designs. These, that's, there's a question here, and, uh, basically the design standards and materials in six point four would only apply to the downtown mixed-use and corridor preservation mixed-use zoning districts. And six point four point four point two?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I don't have that section close.
Yeah, I don't have that one. Six point four point four two, yeah, it's a metal round sign with a five two. Single family detached and detached dwellings only.
But that's only six point four.
Yeah. Now, is our resident, um, landscape is, um, let me ask you this first, do you think the discussion on seven six is gonna take longer than two minutes, or do you?
Well, I mean, the seven six, the original one on the final type of the CEO of the House, I know we went back and forth, and the steering committee on that, I don't remember.
Oh, we did.
I know there's a lot of discussion, pros and cons in both ways.
Can I back up and find, what did we do at six point four point four point two?
I think it was settled on, I think it was, I mean, that it's only in the downtown mixed-use.
Okay. Alright. Consider streets.
So, okay, so let's do this, Mr. Paradise, if you could put a note to, to see if you could find the, the notes or the draft that we did in the steering committee on the bond issue?
I will see what we can find.
Yeah, because we, uh, we- Yeah, because we, uh, we did, but I don't remember.
I remember Tom Ziescher had a lot of comments about that.
We, there, there, there's different bonding on these, uh, for subdivision. If, if we don't get the landscaping in before the CO, there may not be a tree there at all. Um, especially if they're putting in subdivision trees. Subdivision tree goes in the yard. Well, if the contractor gets the CO without the required landscaping in place, he sells the house and the homeowner says, "No, you can't come back", then we're stuck and we can't, you know, how do you make somebody go and, and, and do that? So that is one of the issues that ties it back to the CO. Um, with, uh, street trees, it's a little bit different because they're in the right of way. And we can go back and put those in after the CO. And what we typically do there is he's required to put a perfor- performance bond, a performance guarantee. That would not necessarily work with subdivision trees.
Yes ma'am, I'll go back and look.
Yeah, if you could, I think that's where we land, because that, that, all of that feels more familiar. But what I would like to do is, um, because we will, um, I think we have a lengthy agenda for the regular meeting, is conclude, um, our study session at this point. And we will follow up, um, with another, another study session to kind of plow through this and finish and get a recommendation to council. And we will have a ten minute break and reconvene at seven o'clock for our regular planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.